Whenever you folks want to get started.
Awesome. Thank you, Craig. Hi, Emma. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, thanks for the invite.
Yeah, you bet, yeah. We're always happy to invite lots of people to our work sessions. I appreciate everyone attending, too. I know it's a lot and you're all super busy and we didn't give you a huge amount of lead time. So I will just get started. Just want to make sure, once again, that everyone can see my screen. It's the flyer showing sort of the graphic illustration of the summary of all of our public comments. So it's called the Non-Motorized Plan Public Review Draft on the top. Can everyone see that? Sounds like, unless I'm hearing to know, people could say, okay, great. Excellent. So I'm going to turn my camera off because so you don't have to look at me the whole time. But we're just going to go through this flyer to begin with. And I'll just give you some just general information on the public process and the plan. And then I will pull up the comment-response table and we can go through that. If anyone has specific questions on any of those comments, so we will just get started. So I'll turn myself off here. Okay, so again, thanks so much for joining me today. The purpose of our work session today is just to give you a broad overview of the public comments that we received during our public comment period. And there were quite a lot of them. So we figured a work session would be good for you to get some more time to digest them. If there are any specific ones you wanted to talk about today, we're happy to do that. And then what we wanted to do was before implementing any changes into the actual document, we wanted to give the technical advisory committee and policy committee a chance to see all of the comments and then give you a chance to look and have a look through. Again, as I said, if there's anything that stands out to you that you want to talk about, we can talk about those today. And this is prior to us making any changes into the document. And then, of course, hopefully, once we are approved to move forward. Today's a work session, but next month will be the time to formally approve the documents and the proposed changes so that we can move forward with making changes in the actual document. Our hope is to get to that point in this next month and then move forward with the plan so we can get it closer to adoption. So I'm going to go over this form. Christine Chudi is our new public involvement. She's not that new, actually, but she's our public involvement coordinator and she did a great job of summarizing the comments in graphical format for us. So I responded to all the comments as staff and our team responded. And then Christine was able to take all of the comments and summarize them in graphically so you get a better idea of what they entailed. So again, so Non-Motorized Plan Public Review Draft. We had a public review comment period from January 4th to March 5th. So we did a 60-day review. That was a little bit longer than normal. So we want to give people some extra time. Also, just prior to this, also, just to remind everyone, we did have a very thorough internal review agency comment period where we received over 400 comments that were integrated into the plan. Some of those were carried over into the public review period. So it has gone through extensive review by both of your committees and now also the public. So coming period 60 days. During that time, we received almost 800 comments. We received 776 comments. We've categorized them here for you. 292 of those comments, or roughly 38% of those, were project-specific. Basically, they were asking for a specific project or change to a specific project. 186 of those comments, or 24% of the overall comment amount, were asking for specific changes to the document, either a text or graphical change or another type of change. 96 comments, or 12%, were asking for a change to policy or some recommendation for policy-related issues. 10%, or these were categorized as other. Those were asking for clarifications within the document or general support, expressing general support or disapproval of the document. 71 comments were specific to design. So those were either suggesting different design features or considerations than we had previously done. And then finally, the last category, which was coordination. Those came in about 7% of the overall comments. And those were mostly suggesting us to coordinate better with previous plans that had come into play. And a lot of those, some of those plans had not been adopted when we started the process. And so this would be an opportunity to go back and coordinate better with some of those documents. And just another fun fact about this process. So we did receive 776 comments. That isn't 776 people that commented. It's actually 102 people or entities commented. Some people commented as their community council representatives. So their comments were representing an entire community council. But anyhow, so that's about 102 entities or people that commented on the plan. So overall, I think we feel really good about that number of comments. That was more than we've ever received, than I've ever received on any of my planning documents. I know the MTP received a lot. They received more than we did, too. But that's a much bigger plan. So we feel pretty good about our outreach during this process. So I'm just going to go through the comments by category, just to give you a little bit of an idea within those categories, what those comments were about. So first big category is projects. That was our highest scores with 38% of those. Most of those comments were recommending a project that we had overlooked or missed or a change to a project. So over 200 of those comments were recommending projects. Almost 50 of those comments were recommending a reprioritization. So a lot of folks were wanting some of their projects to maybe score a little bit higher. Some of them wanted their projects to score lower for prioritization. But most of it was an upgrade to a higher priority. And then about 25 or so were support for the document, or excuse me, support of the projects within the document. And then about 10 or so were asking us to delete a specific project. The next category, the next highest scoring category was the document category. And those were mostly asking for changes to the actual document. So there was something in the layout or the graphic or the text that they wanted changed. So for the document, the biggest ask was to change something within one of the maps or the tables. And then the second biggest score was changing in the text. So just text clarification or just to change some wording in the text, which are pretty simple text changes, obviously. And then the last one was data. So they were asking for, usually it was to upgrade our data. We did have some data issues making the plan. So we had some data that was out of, I would say, out of date. So we needed to upgrade it. And so they were asking for specific changes to that as well. The next topic, or excuse me, next category was policy. That was mainly asking, so we had some different categories within the policy one. But the biggest, highest scoring one in there was asks for changes to seasonal maintenance or asking for policies that made some change to maintenance. Second was an ask for a policy that would enhance some sort of program development within the plan. And next was an ask for policies regarding education and then funding. And then finally, equity as part of that category. The other category, oh, it sounds kind of weird, but the other category was mostly just, these were 10% of our overall comments. They were asking for a clarification in the plan mostly. And then, or they were just saying something positive or something negative about the plan. I am glad that we have more positives than negatives. So that's always good. We also had coordination. Well, let's go with design because it's the next highest scoring. So design came in around 9% of the comments. Most of the design comments that we got were regarding safety facilities. The design of specific facilities came in next. And then recommendations for different design for amenities and signage. And then some specific winter design comments. And then our final category, coordination. This was one where we just had folks asking how we were coordinating with all of the different plans and studies that have already been completed. So again, the highest score in this category was how are we coordinating with other plans and documents? And could we coordinate better? Another big category in this one, which is another thing we'll talk about today, but was coordinating with HSIP data, which we would like to do with DOT as we're moving forward to change some of our prioritizations in the plan. And then comments on our public involvement process. And then finally, coordination with various agencies throughout the process. So hopefully, and I know the spreadsheet is super long, but hopefully this gives you more of a better, rough, overall summary of what those comments are about. And then I'm going to go ahead and swap over here to the, actually, let me try and pull this up. If I open this, can you all see the comment-response table now?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, great. Okay, thanks. Because I just overlaid it on here. Excellent. Okay, so this is our comment-response table. It's very long. It's, you know, 776 comments. Shoot, I should have page numbers on here. No, it does. The 91 pages are 91 pages of comments. So we obviously won't go through all 776 comments today. But before we jump into those, if you guys have specific questions or comments on those, I did want to say, in regards to all of the information I just showed you, we tried to, so our take was sort of like, we felt like we did a pretty good job as a planning team of capturing the non-motorized network and planning for the network. However, the nature of those non-motorized facilities is very intimate, I think. And for a lot of people who live in, I think what we found is a lot of people who live in their communities, they have a really intimate understanding of the trails and networks in their specific place where they live. And so they had a lot of very specific, detailed comments. So we felt that in general, unless there was an issue, like, and that I'll go over here in a second. In general, we wanted to positively respond to those comments and say that we would try to incorporate whatever project or reprioritization they were asking for because they have a good understanding of their neighborhood and their area. So in general, our responses in this table are very positive. So we wanted to say yes to as many different things as we could. There, however, are a number of things that we weren't able to say yes to. And just to go through those before we go to the table. Things that we weren't able to say yes to, we had quite a few comments that asked us for things that were just not within the scope of work for this plan. They were super detailed or asked for things like incorporating, you know, other plans and policies that weren't part of our, like, the Climate Action Plan is one thing that we were asked to coordinate. And we will be coordinating that into the plan, but more in a broad sense, not a super detailed, specific sense. But things like that, things were just way out of the scope of work for us. Also, the things that we put on hold for right now were specific questions or comments to maintenance. We really would like the opportunity to hold a second maintenance forum before we fully respond to all those comments. And the reason for that is because there were so many questions and comments about maintenance. I feel like what we really need to do is sit down with all of the maintenance folks and work out a solution that's amenable to them, that's something that we can reasonably do and put forward without making promises that we have really no control over here at AMAS because we don't really have any control over maintenance. So having a chance to discuss that in further detail with those entities is something that we need to do. So that's one thing that we're going to try to do. I'd like to do it in August, if we could, hold this second maintenance forum. And that should give us enough time to respond to all those and get all of our maintenance concerns on board. The third thing is HSIP. We did have quite a few comments from DOT asking us to coordinate the HSIP data into our plan, which will require us to go back and do some more data analysis. So we would like to do that, and I think that will be worthwhile. And we should do that, but that's going to take some coordination and some more meetings coming up. And we've just been kind of swamped responding to all of these comments since our comment-review period. So that's going to be coming up. And then the next thing I had were a lot of the comments were asking about specific trails plan requests. And so what we wanted to let folks know going forward was that we do have a trails plan, a specific trails plan update in the works. We have funding for it. And we have had parks agree to lead that project going forward. So in response to a lot of trails questions, if we didn't answer them in this table, they will be addressed in the forthcoming trails plan that parks will lead. So and then the last thing I was going to say was, for any other questions that we didn't have a specific yes answer to, those were things that we just don't have funding for right now. We'd love to do everything in this plan, but recognizing that we just can't do everything. And it's going to be improvement and it's going to be a step forward. It's not going to be perfect, but at some point, you just have to move forward and move forward with the document. So that was kind of my overall summary. Does anyone have any questions on that before we open it up to specific comment questions? Oh, and I, let me see. And Craig, I think you, I'm trying to keep an eye on the chat here, but if something comes up on the chat, where is the chat? There's the chat.
Sorry, I'm off the mute. Shayna has her hand up. That's the only, that's the only thing we see so far.
Okay, yes, Shayna, what is your question?
Hi, thanks for all your work on this and breaking down the questions and categories. That's really helpful to look at it that way. In regards to the comments in the plan that say in 2021, there will be data updates. Can you tell me what those are referring to and when those will be incorporated? Just kind of as an overall question?
Yeah, do you know, or do you have a specific, just help me answer. Do you have a specific, was that a specific comment number that I can reference or just?
I don't remember. I was looking through these and through the plan.
I can answer that broadly. So, yeah, there's a couple of different angles on that. One is that, so during the planning process, we did not have access to, well, we had access to data, but the data wasn't updated. And so that is an action item in the plan is to update the GIS layer, especially for the pedestrian facilities. Our bicycle facilities were pretty up to date, but the pedestrian ones needed a lot of work. And so going forward, we will be coordinating with the IT department and Tina to create some mapping that's, not relative, some mapping that accurately portrays the facilities. So like what we have on the ground and what we have planned going forward. And once our GIS data is updated, then we can accurately reflect those on those GIS maps as well. So that's probably what you're referring to. The other one is like the trails plan update that I was just talking about. That is going to require a really deep dive into all of the trails data. And that is another element of the data that really needs to be updated. That's just really out of date right now. So we're hoping to work with parks and they'll be leading that effort. I'm not sure that that plan is still so new. I'm not sure what kind of data reach they're going to go for. But they're definitely going to need an updated trails dataset before they do that plan. So that'll happen prior to the trails update. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I wasn't positive if it was mostly the GIS update that it was referring to and there were some questions and answers in the spreadsheet. So I just didn't know if there were other updates that needed to be updated or needed to be included after the adoption. Thank you.
Gotcha. Yeah, no. And if you see another comment as we go through the spreadsheet, feel free to stop me. That's what I have up top of my head right now, though. So thanks, Shayna. Does anyone else have any questions before we look at the spreadsheet? No? Alrighty. Well, I'm going to keep my chat open. So if anyone has a question anytime, just feel free to type it in or raise your hand and I'll stop. But so everyone can kind of see the spreadsheet. I didn't know, maybe let me minimize this a little. Is that, I know Craig's screen is huge, but this might be too small for people to read it. If you need me to make it bigger, just let me know and I can zoom it. So again, 776 comments. I was excited to see that we got a bunch of comments from AARP. I think the more we can pull them in, the better, especially as Anchorage becomes a city where people want to age in place. And they really are relying on our non-motorized network. I can either just go down here or we can jump to specific comments. So we're just in alphabetical order here. So next is DOT comments. And again, like I said, a lot of these, a lot of these, we tried to say yes to as many as we could. There were also, there are also a bunch of these, so request meeting to go over HSIP coordination. So that will be a big, that will be a big thing going forward. But we're in talks with Scott Thomas right now and Sean. So we are ready to set that up as soon as we kind of get approval to move forward from you guys. And that's going to be, again, incorporating HSIP data into our data reach so that we can have a better idea of the prioritization of PED corridors. And then we're also looking at intersections. What if we need to call out specific intersections for specific projects that need improvement? So there are a bunch of those with this HSIP data. And I'll just go through here, through these guys. And then if you see an NA anywhere, it doesn't mean that we ignored the question. So here's a bunch of NAs. It just means that we couldn't find a specific ask. We didn't, if it was just a comment and they weren't actually asking us for a change in the plan, then that resulted in us just doing an NA. And then we didn't recommend a change because there wasn't any change that was requested there.
Could we go back to some of the DOT comments? I noticed a couple of NAs and I was, you know, I looked through these comments before I sent them up and I wanted to maybe clarify what it was that we were asking for on some of those.
Yeah, 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 sure. Is there one in particular? Do you want me to just scroll up? To the top? Here, I'll go to the top.
16, 17, and 18 were NAs on the DOT.
Okay.
So 18, I think that may have been one that I wrote. We're talking about, I think in that, on page 61, you made, the plan made a reference to Salt Lake City. I guess the ask there would possibly be, you know, if we're enhancing facilities for safety purposes, we should be focusing on pedestrian facilities. I don't necessarily, yeah, I can see why that seems vague. If you want, I can look at these three and get back to you with some written responses about what it was that we were trying to say in those.
Sure. No, absolutely. Yeah, if there's something that we, yeah, that looks like you need more to clarify that for us to give you a better answer, that is perfectly fine. Yes, please take time to do that. I will say just real quick, so we did get that comment, especially early on in this plan that seemed like a bike-centric plan and it wasn't focused enough on pedestrian safety, especially since all of our, a lot of the data and the Vision Zero data that we found tells us that PEDs are the biggest group, the biggest at-risk group in Anchorage or in the AMAS area. So a couple of things that we did in that plan, because we did get that comment a lot. One thing that we did was to include the pedestrian projects from the old PED plan, from the 2007 PED plan into the document as references so that we can have all of those projects in there. The majority of those projects were not implemented between now and 2007, when the plan was adopted. So carrying those forward helps, I think, helps folks see that we are carrying all those projects forward and those weren't dropped by the wayside or anything. The other thing is that some of our network recommendations, like our shared-use pathways and separated bicycle facilities, some of those, or enhanced shared bikeways, some of those are also, they are also facilities for pedestrians. So we just, they, for some reason, they fell into the bike category and the bicycle section. So it's just to go back and say, actually, so these facilities that we're recommending for in this bicycle section, they also serve pedestrians as well. So I do hear your concern there, Sean. We certainly got that comment from multiple people. So we're trying to show that we are, it's not intended to be a bike-centric plan. And we do recognize the importance of making pedestrians priority. So. Do you want, should I keep going through here? Does anyone have any questions?
Okay. I think unless somebody else wants to talk about these three, I mean, I can go back and see exactly what it was that we were trying to say and maybe word it in a way that seems a bit more actionable and get that back to you for those three.
Perfect. Yeah, that'll be great. Thank you. So, yep, so a lot of these are going to be covered in our forthcoming HSIP meetings. Let's see. So we did get a lot of comments. And of course, again, we appreciate all of the time and effort it takes to comment on this plan. I know it's a lot of work for a lot of people. So thank you. I was, so Anchorage Parks Foundation, I was really impressed at the detail that came in with this public review. I was not expecting, I mean, I was expecting comments. I just wasn't expecting such detailed comments. So that really surprised me, but I think in a good way, just shows people really care about their facilities. So we got, yeah, we got great comments from some local.
Johnny?
Yes?
I have a comment on item 93.
Okay, yes.
So this is Michelle. So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is going to get adopted by the Assembly, correct, and become an element of the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
So I think we need, I would suggest maybe a different response because, you know, Anchorage, the land use, or the comprehensive plan, 2040 plan speaks to how other adopted plans will kind of interact. And so the MTP is not actually adopted by the Assembly, so it is separate. But this is an element of the plan. And so. And so to, I, I think we need to probably work on a different response that kind of gets to that. Because um, the design community will need guidance on how this plays into their designs. And I, and I don't think that the response adequately directs them or informs them on how that would be. So I don't have the answer right now, but I would flag that. And I think you, myself, and Tom Davis could sit down and have that conversation of how to, how to put that in there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Michelle. Um, yeah, making a note for myself. So that's ninety-three. Um, where is it? Did you, we could, and that was Melissa's. I know she's with Beddoesworth North. So yeah, they had some great design specific comments. Um, okay, yeah, for sure. So you wanted to sit down with Tom, Tom, myself, and?
Yeah, I don't know if I, I'll happily sit down with you guys. I just, and I say that because he wrote kind of the crosswalk section and twenty forty that explains how different plans play into each other.
Okay, great.
So he'll, he'll help craft really good language, I'm sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sounds good.
Thanks.
Yeah. Um, okay, I'm gonna keep scrolling. Um, making some notes for myself here as we go.
Joni, it's Michelle again.
Yeah.
On item one oh eight, um, about the graphics. I know that the response was that you would assign image credit, but you may actually need to ask them their permission before using it.
Okay, got it. Yes. I will, I will do that. Thank you. Uh, yeah, what picture is that? Page one outside. Okay. For the, the, um, Campbell Creek Trail over path. Image. Okay. Okay, that. Okay, okay. Keep scrolling here. They always have some great, um, super specific recommendations for us. And some of it was, um, you know, ma, a lot of map edit asks. Um, you're always trying to balance having, you know, not too much information on a map. So you don't want it to be really confusing to where, uh, so it's like too much information or too little. We did have several comments asking us to um, show the existing, um, existing facilities on a map as well as the new proposed facilities sort of overlaid. So you could see where the new facilities were connecting those um, missing links. So I think that's something that we, that was a good idea.
Joni?
Yeah?
Did you say that uh, the, the, there's going to be updated maps for what is planned and what is existing to reflect the reality in some GIS system somewhere?
That's right. So um, so we worked with Tina Miller um, through, through this planning process. And one thing that she's excited about, more excited about is um, once this plan is adopted, we would like to, and approved and all of the projects in there and have been approved. Um, we'd like to create a map so that folks, the public can go online and see, um, you know, the existing facilities that are there now. And then also what's, and what's planned or, or, I guess I shouldn't say planned, but maybe what's prioritized so that they can say, yeah.
Is that on an existing portal or would that be an entirely new system?
I don't know exactly how she was thinking about doing it. But um, what is the, um, and I should know the name, the, the municipal database now with all the maps? Um, it would be that, I think, I believe it would be that type of format where it's um, why am I blanking on the name of it? Craig, help me out here. What's called? Uh, but it's basically.
I don't remember the name, but I, I know what you're talking about.
Okay, yes.
Too, sorry.
Okay, sorry, I should know. Um, no, but uh, yeah, so it's basically uh, where the, you can go on the municipal website and get access to the map that would show you the prioritized projects so that people can keep abreast of what's, you know, without having to dive into a planning document.
Okay, yeah, that would be really helpful. Those are, those are good to have.
Yeah, no, for sure. I know, anything we can do to improve data and access to data, it's always, always good. Um,
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep scrolling. But uh, feel free to stop me here anytime. We did have interesting, some really interesting comments from the Friends of the Anchorage Coastal Wildlife Refuge. One of them was, um, our AMATS boundary um, is shown to go into that wildlife coastal refuge. And so one of the comments was that we need to take that out because that wasn't correct. And um, you know, we weren't, shouldn't be showing our boundary, our AMATS boundary going into this coastal refuge area, which, which is correct. But um, after talking with Craig and Erin about it, um, we kind of realized that that data that dictates where the AMATS boundary is is um, really dictated to us by the federal, by the federal government. And until they tell us that we have to exclude parts of the census blocks, um, it's just gonna, we can't really do anything about it. So that was an interesting comment that came out from Barbara's, um, Barbara's comments.
Joni, this is Michelle.
Yes?
I have comments, I have two comments on this page, uh, starting with one seventy-six.
Okay.
Uh, so the next, sorry, the page before.
Okay.
So Barbara is actually correct. Um, we should actually be avoiding cutting people's property. This is effectively um, messing with people's properties and changing their boundaries. So even though a plat is, would be required to effectuate that change, the planning requirements are that if there are plans shown on adopted plans, then we're required to require that applicant to dedicate a public use easement. So where we place these uh, trails do matter. Um, so we should be avoiding cutting people's property. That, that should be a goal.
Okay, it's, um, so I guess I'm a little, when, um, when you say cutting people's property, so is, so so we're showing our AMATS boundaries and that's cutting people's property. And so that's what she's referring to there, was my understanding.
So I guess I read it to be that there are maybe trails that are being shown that are cutting through people's property and maybe cutting them in half. And if that is the case, then the team should go back and make sure that that is, that it's being done strategically and not um, impeding someone's ability to develop that property.
Okay.
Because a trail easement is going to be required.
Right. Um, okay, so and so my response was that the, okay, so we're, so we'll have to be, I wonder if this is going to be more of a Trails update issue. But we can, well, let me, well, we will go back and look. Um, we will go back and look and see and make sure we're not doing that.
Okay. Yeah, and if it is maybe even some language saying that this trail is just general location, subject to move, just something that gives wiggle room. Because otherwise, um, we are going to put other sections of the planning department in a really bad position.
Right. Okay, gotcha. Um, so right, so some, so some language there.
Or just trying to refrain from, yeah, doing it, especially if it's private property.
Right. I know when, when we did the, um, when we first began the process and we had that app that people were, the app that people were using to suggest, you know, where they wanted specific trails to be that maybe weren't there. Um, so that was definitely on the online, that was on the online mapping part. But that map didn't make it into the document. So, but I'll go back and look and see and just make sure we're not doing that. And if we are, we'll, we'll fix it and we'll also include some language there.
Great, thanks.
Like, yeah, no, and I can work with you on that, too.
And then on, just comment one eighty-two, um, there seems to be a prayer, uh, confusion about, you know, the perception of prioritization of whether, you know, walking over a bicycle. Um, I was just wondering if, you know, we, we say that it's a misconception, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to clarify the misconception.
Yeah, I know. And so it kind of gets back to what I, or let me just write that one down. We, so kind of gets back to what I was talking about before. And we had all those comments at the beginning that, that basically said, well, this plan is really bike heavy and it really seems like you're prioritizing bicycles over pedestrians. And so to try and fix that, we um, included the pedestrian table from the old plan, as I mentioned. We also included some language in the plan about how our bike facilities, the things that we have as bike facilities are also serving pedestrians. But um, you know, if that's not, if that's not enough, we can certainly add some additional language. I think our consultants also added additional language upfront um, to, to sort of try and clarify that. But um, well, I, I, that's definitely come up. So we will make sure that we try to really hammer that home in this final draft. Because that definitely wasn't our intention and they're not. Yeah, go ahead.
I wonder if part of what is giving that idea, and I, I, I don't know. And if I looked through it a little more, I might be able to give something more concise. But I wonder if maybe what's giving that idea is sort of the design suggestions or the scale? I mean, you know, we can, we can collaborate on trying to figure out what's going on. But I think anytime you get something where you're getting the same comment over and over again, there's got to be something there that maybe you're not seeing.
Yeah, no, I know. Good, no, good comment. I think my, my guess is that um, the main reason for that initially was that we have a plan that lays out bicycle project recommendations. And then it also lays out uh, priority corridors for pedestrian uh, facilities. So we have pedestrians getting recommendations for corridors, priority corridors. And we have bicycles getting like specific project recommendations. And so um, so I think that's what happened early on. And one of the reasons that we did that, and I know everyone's probably heard this ten times already, but one of the reasons that we felt that that was the best approach is because um, the expense and um, the amount of effort it takes to implement one pedestrian project is so huge. And so we only were able to implement a very few number of pedestrian projects from our two thousand and seven plan. Um, and so um, we felt that going forward, and another reason was our pedestrian data, GIS data, was not up to date, still not up to date. So um, planning with that out of date pedestrian data was a real challenge. So moving forward, um, we felt that it was best to prioritize those corridors instead of assigning actual projects, especially since there are already projects from the two thousand and seven plan. And then also, we hope that this would give our designers more flexibility instead of telling them what type of project to implement, since it's, um, you know, since with the changing times, we have got new technology, new types of facilities that would give designers more flexibility to say, well, this is a high safety priority corridor. Here's what we're going to put in here. This is up, this is best practice. This is up to date, that type of thing. So I know it, it gets convoluted, but um, I think that was the major reason why we um, had that misconception at the beginning. It's sort of carrying over here in these comments, but um, we can do, we can do a better job of trying to make that more clear to folks.
Yeah, I agree. I think uh, maybe one thing to think about sort of going forward. I mean, I, frankly, I think it's a good plan all in all. But um, in terms of this bike ped sort of dichotomy, you know, we have these things where like there's e-bikes that exist or, you know, people who go on their bikes really fast. I know when I've been living in other places, there have, honestly, there've been issues with the way that the bike ped infrastructure is designed and these e-bikes that go really fast, pedestrians have gotten injured by bicyclists. Um, so you know, I think there's, there's some design stuff there and, and uh, maybe there's a bit of nervousness involved with people who do a lot of walking. They, they, I, I think there's, there's a, a tacit awareness that things are changing when it comes to how biking around places and bicycle infrastructure works. So I think, um, yeah, if you, if you want to, I can go through and look at, look at these, these comments and try to figure out where, where these people are making these comments. And maybe I can, maybe I can interpret it in a different way and we can get together and, and look at it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Um, no, we're definitely open to any suggestions and ways to make it seem more um, um, like we are to equal, you know, equal treatment for bicyclists and peds if, if not, keeping, been skewing towards pedestrians. Interestingly, too, I feel like a lot of our land use plans um, do a great job of addressing pedestrian facilities in a way that is a little bit more difficult with our um, transportation plans. Because all the people, places where people are walking all the time are all of these areas where there's all of these land uses that are meeting their needs. And so um, it's definitely combined effort. But um, we definitely want to come across uh, and show people that we are just as concerned, if not more concerned, about pedestrians. So any, any and all comments uh, will, will be welcome. So, thank you. Um, okay, I'm gonna keep on scrolling here. Uh, if anyone wants to stop me, feel free. Um, and as I said, again, we tried to say, uh, to as many of the community asks as we could for specific projects, um, asks and requests and reprioritizations. We did try to say yes to as many as we could. Um, we did have a ton of comments about, we did leave out one, um, really, well, we left out a couple, but we hopefully fixed it. But we left out one big project on Eagle River. Um, we received a ton of comments about that Eagle River uh, project along the Glen, Old Glen Highway. Um, or the Glen Highway. Uh, so we, there are a lot of.
Joni?
The same, yes.
Sorry, I'm not sure if we're just supposed to, to chime in or?
No, yes, yes, please.
So, um, I was just curious on comments twenty, two thirty-five, two thirty-six. Um, it, it seems like we just say, you're just saying like staff disagrees with this recommendations. And in almost every other case, there's kind of an explanation given. Um, it was just, it just seemed odd to me. I was just wondering if we could provide a, um, a recommend, or a response. Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, no, I can. I was probably suffering from question-response fatigue.
I'm, I, yeah.
But I will, but now I agree. It's always good to provide an explanation. I will look back at these ones. Uh, what is this? Um, two thirty-five, two thirty-eight. Okay, gotcha. Yeah. Thanks for pointing that out. Okay. Um, alrighty, keep, we're keeping on scrolling here. Um, Fish Creek. Oh, there's Mark Grover comments. I see Lindsay, I see Lindsay on the phone, so there's some of her comments. Um, this one, I'm just going to point this one out. Um, from Fairview, we did get a few folks from Fairview, um, that felt that the plan had kind of, um, neglected their area, uh, which we, we definitely were not trying to do. That was not intentional. Um, we, uh, drew data equally from all the, from all areas in the AMATS, um, boundary. So, but, um, for areas like Fairview, we would really like to, um, go back and try to accommodate their project recommendations and asks. And so we're going to do another deep dive into Fairview, um, just to point that out. Alan's, uh, with DOT, he had a lot of very specific, um, design related comments. A lot of information about what they're doing in other places, specific to design and winter and winter city design. And as you can see, kind of going through here, there are a lot of comments that are about maintenance. Um, so again, just wanting to reiterate that that was such a big, um, topic of discussion with a, a public comment. So that merits us, I, I think, you know, incorporating the second maintenance forum into all of the doc answers before we, before we finalize the plan. Um, for Nancy, um, Peas and Rabbit Community Council, I'm just going to pull, highlight these a little bit. She had a lot of really great specific comments. Um, some of the comments were, fell into that category. That was sort of outside the scope of our, what we can do in this planning document. And several of, of these comments in the Rabbit Community Council comments, um, were asking for things that maybe required coordination, uh, with several different municipal agency departments that we can, we really don't have, um, the power at AMATS to just, um, do or put in a specific project, especially if we don't know, um, how these other agencies are going to be able to maintain it or what jurisdiction that's going to fall under. So a lot of these, or some of these, I should say, are, um, fall into that, out of the scope of our plan category, even though they have a lot of great, um, suggestions and a lot of improvements that need to be made in that area. Um, that's just going to require further coordination. So, and that, that might be something that, that the trails plan update can do in better details, be better equipped to do than this, than the, so. And again, as we're going through here, I just would say that, um, we can't do everything in this plan. We're trying to do something that's an improvement and we're going to move forward with it. Um, and we want to focus on those folks who really rely on our non-motorized network to get around for their day-to-day needs. And so, um, again, that's pulls us toward that focus on the core, the kind of the core network. So, and some of the Nancy's comments are the same as the Rabbit Creek Community comments, but quite a few of those. But yeah, as you can see, for a lot of them, we tried to say yes to project recommendations. If we could, we tried to say yes. And then a lot of great comments. He actually interned with the planning department, um, for a while.
Joni, can you? Scroll up to the previous page. There was something on there about tourists on Minnesota. Well, regardless, what, what it made me think about. It may, what I'm thinking about may not be relevant to the comment in particular, but what it made me think about was something that I didn't say, but that I see fairly regularly. I, I live near the zoo and in the summer, I mean, that, that section of O'Malley is, um, still fairly high speed and people often are trying to walk across O'Malley to get to the zoo. It's a fairly attractive place for people who are walking around or frankly, you know, bikes and, and other kinds of, uh, non-motorized. And I, you know, I've, I've never seen anyone get run into there, but it seems to me as though it would be helpful to sort of identify that as a place that's attractive to non-motorized for, um, individuals and maybe try to make some accommodations as necessary.
Okay, yeah, that's great feedback. Um, okay, so that's right by the zoo there. I know what you're talking about. I drive by there on my way up to the hiking trails all the time. So, um, okay, so to have another, we'll have another look at that for some potential pedestrian and bike improvements.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't know what the plan specifically says, but just it, it reminded me that that's something that I see and it feels unsafe to me.
Yeah, no, gotcha. I know, you know, and that's what, another reason why I feel like this public, this public input is so valuable, because it's just so hard to get that intimate, um, knowledge unless you're o- out there on the road or on the trail, on the road, walking or biking. And so I feel like that makes this, this public process all that much more valuable. So, okay, thanks. Got that noted. And then Christine, she had some edits for me. I think I denied one of her, she's our public planner here, but I think I said no to one of her edits and she came into my app and she's like, wait, what are you talking about? Anyways, so then I, then I fixed. Um, okay, so we are continuing to scroll down. We are, um, going through just some more public, public comments here. Spinar Community Council had some great comments. We, uh, the first time around, we, um, well, the smart community count, or the spinar quarter plan was still in the works and hadn't been approved yet. Um, but we, um, also left out a, a few bigger projects in that area that was an oversight. So we're definitely going back and fixing those. And they had a lot of really good comments for us. Um, we are definitely coordinating with that plan, um, to work to build off of all the great work that's been done there already. And I'm sorry, I'm not keeping, I'm not keeping as good an eye on the chat as I probably should be. So if, Craig, if you see something, stop me.
I'm watching it.
Okay, I know you're watching it like a hawk.
I am doing my job.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so we are actually, we're getting through this table here. Um, so a lot of, lot of great comments again. As mentioned before, trying to build out that community intimate knowledge of their facilities. Trying to incorporate that into our overall document. Oh, and then John Spring, who was a transportation planner here, had a lot of really great comments for us, too. Um, Will is from Eagle River and had some great comments for us, um, out in Chugac and Eagle River, which we really appreciate. And they were, they were very involved in this plan. Actually, they have a great network of, um, trail, trail and bike and users and walkers that participated. So that was good. I even prompted me to think that we should maybe do like a bicycle tour out in Eagle River to go, go, um, tour some of their facilities and get some more feedback. Maybe this summer. And then, um, Turning In, Turning In Community Council was very involved. They had some very specific, uh, project recommendations and, um, some of their projects, they were the community that, um, I, I want to say had the most specific, uh, facility requests. So we met with them privately, or not privately, but I mean, we were happy to meet with any communities. And I met with a lot of different community councils throughout the process, but they had some very specific requests and, um, so we tried to accommodate those where we could. We're almost, we are almost at the end of our table here. University area. Lots of great, kind of a lot of great comments also from DOT and Sean about incorporating the UMed area and providing some linkages there. So thank you for those really good comments. Um, and that was especially a good idea, uh, that we, that we missed. The project team missed while we were doing the plan. So I'm glad we're, glad you guys weighed in. And that's, this, well, this is our last page here. So we made it through. Well, we made it through the table. Um, that, of course, is the table and you'll have some more time to look over it. Um, if there's anything that pops out at you that you want to talk about prior to the technical advisory committee meeting and policy committee meeting in July, please, um, feel free to contact me. Otherwise, we will, we will, uh, put this on the agenda to hopefully be approved so that we can, um, start making changes to the document and also, um, initiate those meetings with DOT to go over HSIP data coordination and then also, um, scheduling the, um, maintenance, the second winter maintenance forum. But, uh, does anyone have any overall questions? Oh, oh, great. Jamie said, oh, thanks, Jamie. Thanks for your comment. Does anyone have any overall questions before we, uh, wrap it up here? Or need any additional information?
So Jenny, Joni, you're going to move this forward to the TAC for approval onto the policy at this point?
That's right. Yeah, that's our, that's our hope.
Okay, and then we go final after that?
Yeah, so we'll, um, so once the policy committee approves it, we will make the changes and we'll have those meetings that I just, uh, stated. And then, um, once the final document is, um, you know, all the changes have been incorporated, it will go back to the technical advisory committee, I believe, for additional, one more look over and approval. And then I think it goes to the assembly. And then I think it goes to the policy committee for final.
All right. So total timeline, we're looking at another two to three months, it sounds like?
Yeah, that'd be great, actually. Two to three months would be ideal.
All right. Thank you, Joni.
Thank you. It's Wolfgang.
When is that TAC meeting?
Uh, it is, um, let's see, it is
July 8th, okay. And so, um, up until then, you potentially would be making some changes to what this document looks like.
Yeah, so I, wait, right. So the, so what I would only be making changes to are the, um, the table right now, the comment responsible. Yeah, so we'll, so based on the feedback from today, I'm looking at the numbers that we talked about and those asks, and then I'll get together with you, Sean. Uh, and if you have some ideas to, to send me your way, to send them my way, and then, um, we'll just make changes to this table responses and then that'll be what's, what goes forward to be approved.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Great. Um, well, if anyone, if nobody has any other questions, I just want to say a really big thank you again to everyone. I know this is a, a lot of work and a lot of comments to go over. And I really appreciate everyone, uh, attending the meeting and helping us during this process. Uh, it's super, super great. So thank you so much.
Joni, there, there is a question in the chat from Wiser. It says, will the comment response table be public, publicly available once it's finalized? And yeah, we'll, we'll put it up as soon as we get it. Uh, it'll be posted a week before the TAC meeting. So that should be this Thursday, I believe, the first.
Okay, yes. Right. And, oh, right. Okay. So then, great. That's great, Craig, too, because that, so I will have all my changes in by the first. Uh, and, um, based on our feedback today. And then Sean, I will, I'm going to coordinate with you maybe tomorrow. It's tomorrow, Wednesday. And we'll get our comments sorted out before Thursday. So, yeah, that's a quick turnaround.
Okay, yep, sounds good.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it. And, um, I hope you can go out and enjoy some sunshine now. Cause we have one day of sunshine, so.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful day. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.